Welcome to the Madawan Aberdeen Regional School District Committee's Hold Meeting on February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. The time is now six thirty-one P M. The New Jersey Open Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of into attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or agreed upon. In accordance with the provision of this act, the Madawan Aberdeen Regional School District Board of Education advertised this meeting on June seventh, two thousand and twenty-two, in the Asbury Park Press and the Star-Literacy. This notice was sent to the municipal clerks of the borough of Madawan and the township of Aberdeen and the Madawan Aberdeen Public Library. The notice was also placed on the district's website. Can we please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united.
Ms. Case, can we please have a roll call?
Ms. Rayher?
Here.
Ms. Vilas?
Here.
Ms. Gershner?
Here.
Mr. Montone?
Here.
Ms. Powell?
Here.
Ms. Warrenke?
Here.
Ms. Martinez?
Here.
Mrs. Colley?
Here.
So before we get to the superintendent's report, we're going to start with the board president's report. And just bear with me, it's kind of long term. So for tonight's board report, I wanted to address the recent issues that are being discussed in the community right now. While I know this is a board report, I want to talk both as a board member and as a parent of three kids in the district. I do have two in the high school and one in the middle school. I want to assure you that all of us up here care deeply about our students and want them to have the best and safest experience possible in our district academically, socially, and mentally. First, I wanted to discuss the social media concern that Dr. Micat and the high school and middle school principals shared with the community last week. We wanted to make sure the community was aware of what we were seeing and hearing as we believe that the way to improve things is communicating and working together as a whole school community. Specifically, last week, we were made aware of a couple of Instagram pages that were created anonymously. When one was shut down, another popped up, different name the next day. Kids were encouraged to send in rants anonymously via a Google form. Posts were made about other students as well as some of our staff members, calling them out by name and saying some pretty awful things about them. I've heard people, other parents, say that the students were joking or kidding around with their friends, but not every person that was named wanted to be called out in public and have mean and untrue things said about them. I think it's very important to remember that our students who struggle daily with depression and anxiety, and sometimes they're in its silence, one post like this could be devastating to them. I would like to encourage parents, guardians, and guardians to talk with their children about social media use, appropriate behavior online, and how treating others like this could have a major impact on someone's life. And just because a comment is anonymous doesn't make it any less hurtful to the person receiving it. Quite frankly, sometimes it's even worse. I can tell you from personal experience, as a mom who has had a child on the receiving end previous to myself being on the board, of unwanted negative attention in the past by a group, that it can be very devastating when a group targets your child. It affects them mentally and emotionally for a very long time. I can assure you that as a board, we will do everything we can, and as in the administration, everything we can from a school perspective to protect all our students and work quickly to resolve concerns brought to our attention as we did with this issue. I want to thank the Central Office and Building Administration, I T Security, the Security Resource Officer, and the Aberdeen Police Department for working together in this matter. I can tell you as a board that we are committed to continuing to find ways to protect our kids. We recently updated the H I D policy in November, two thousand and twenty-two, making big improvements based on the updates to the law. Thanks to Mallory's law, we have a stronger policy with stricter repercussions for students when it comes to H I D. Now, after a student has a third H I D incident, the law requires a student intervention plan to be developed, and parental involvement is now recognized. Parents can be found liable if they willfully disregard bullying and harassment. If you haven't seen the film Mallory, I do encourage you to watch it because while it's heartbreaking, it does bring awareness to that issue. So as mentioned in Dr. Micat's community letter, the schools do have plans in place to help any student who may be struggling, to help students in these matters and to create a positive school environment. Also related to this incident, the board is reviewing and updating the technology and cell phone policy to address any potential concerns and help ensure its enforcement. Second concern we are hearing from community members is regarding fights in the middle school. As a parent, actually, a few of us up here have children in the middle school, and many other members of the board have children as well and can relate. And I can assure you that student safety is of primary importance to all of us. While we have seen a reduction in the amount of fighting this year versus last year, this can always be improved, as any level of fighting is bad. At the beginning of this year, the schools, the middle school did set clear expectations for students, and we really have seen a great improvement. There are morning meetings, assemblies, small groups sessions, counseling, presentations on internet safety, and we will continue to find ways, not just at P A M S, but at all our schools, to keep our students safe. As we've said in the past, the focus on mental health is also a very important priority for us. The district hosted a mental health workshop for parents and guardians on February first, and the second workshop is planned for March third. There is also a symposium on mental health and wellness on February twenty-third at six P M. at Herddale. There will be students and educators there and very helpful resources available. We encourage parents and guardians to attend, and information about the workshop and how to attend is located on the district website. Thank you for listening. Now, pass it to Dr. Mike.
Thank you. To expand on what was just said, anytime things like this happen, all of us take these things deeply to heart and we take a pause to look at what we're doing internally to improve things all of the time. And last week, at the high school and the middle school with the online threats, not excuse me, the online postings about students and staff members, we learned a couple of things that we need to do differently as we move forward. One of the issues with that was that those pages were not formed on our system. So once we had shut down the first one, the next one popped up the other, the next day, unbeknownst to us because we, those things were not being done on our system. But one of the things that we've done immediately was we shut down one of our avenues to the Wi-Fi for students that was there for students that brought their own devices into school. So that has been shut down amongst many other things. However, what I'd like to focus on now is what we are going to do moving forward, some of the things that are already in place. But I ask the community that we go forward together and help each other to come up with answers and get around a table and talk about these things. I am not a creature of social media, but when we get on social media and there's a constant back and forth, that needs to stop. My door is always open. You can call me anytime. There's people in the audience that know that they can call me anytime. Let's sit around a table and talk about solutions for our children and our community because that is the most important thing at the end of the day, that our children are coming to school safe and learning. And when we can't do that, we need to look at things as a community and come together and work together to that end. To that end, specifically at the middle school, the last month, working through our school resource officer, they've set up a program with the local police departments that they're going into classrooms to talk about these issues that we're talking about tonight, the fighting and, to Mrs. Colley's point, anytime where you have one fight, that's one fight too many. So we want zero, and that's what we're going to continue to work towards. On top of that, I have been working with the county pro, there's a new county prosecutor. The county prosecutor was at our county roundtable last, two weeks ago. I am setting up a meeting with the county prosecutor and also the juvenile judge Vermont County who I have spoken to two or three times in the last three months about what I see as issues within the system when something happens and with a minor and what needs to happen so they can get to the right places so that we can make some difference in the outcome. You have my word that everyone, I'm speaking for everybody up here to what Mrs. Colley said, but particularly to administration, that I, this is my life's work. I'm going to see this through, so these things are non-existent, but it's going to take all of us working together. And I only ask that we come together as a community and be an example for what can follow. Thank you.
Before I move on to the rest of the agenda, I think there may have been a member or two that just wanted to say something.
Yeah, thanks, Mrs. Colley. I appreciate you guys and everything that you just talked to, and I also don't even know how to explain how awful it is to hear about that event down south. And Jay knows how annoyingly passionate we are with bullying and constantly asking a million questions. So yes, we are a hundred percent involved, but my biggest thing is, you know, we can take care of the kids hopefully as best we can in the building, but like Jay and Annette said, we really need parents' involvement. And I, you still, Dr. Mike, you still have your roundtables, right?
Eight years in running.
Yeah.
Once a month, yes.
Yeah, so I mean, there's so many ways to get involved and help, but just please talk to the kids, and that's the biggest thing. Social media is not going away, it's going to get worse, so. And I'm sad that we needed it, but I'm glad that this H I D law is as strong as it is because again, there needs to be consequence. So yeah, so thank you, everybody, for all your work because I feel like we're always just putting out little fires and another one pops up. So you just want to get back to educating and the normal stuff that we should be doing. Thank you.
Anyone else before you move on to agenda?
I just wanted to add to that. I think there is, we had talked about a couple of meetings ago, doing an ad hoc committee about policy. One of the reasons that a few of the members felt that that was necessary was just looking at A, enforcement, and B, maybe updating the policies. The phone use at school is really rampant, and maybe that needs to be looked at, you know, where and when should phone use be allowed in the school building during instructional time? So I think we're going to continue looking forward, looking at the policies around that, and hopefully that will also, you know, help because I think one of the issues that's popping up, and I know this has been reported to be an issue in the South Jersey case, is that it was, the video part of the incident was the main purpose for instigating that altercation. So we want to kind of really curb that kind of use as much as possible.
Thank you for saying that. I would also like to add to that at our last county roundtable meeting, prior to all of, you know, prior to the central regional tragedy, there was a discussion that, just to your point, Ms. Warrenke, that nationwide, here, everywhere, we're starting to see more and more of that as if it's a game, and that is completely unacceptable, and I couldn't agree with you more.
Okay, so we're going to move on to the rest of the agenda. First up, we have curriculum and instruction.
Thank you, good evening, everyone. Under curriculum and instruction, we're asking for a board approval for the following action items as listed under A, items under B, one, two, and three, pages two, one through three. That concludes curriculum and instruction.
Thank you. Can I get a motion in a second to approve the agenda?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, student services, Ms. Perez.
And under student services, we're asking for board approval to take action on items one through seven, pages one through three. That concludes student services.
Thank you. Can I get a motion in a second to approve the agenda?
I'll motion. I'll second.
Personnel, Mr. Leegman.
Thank you. Good evening. Under personnel, we have two action items this evening. Action item number one is appointments. Two staff members are appointed as listed. Ms. Case, I'd like to agree to change you in two minutes on your appointments. So Marlo Duzo-McMillan, the first recommendation, we actually want to change her start date from four seventeen to four one twenty-three, she's now available to start. And action item number two, staff rate changes, which are listed on page one, continue on page two of seven. The remaining items on the agenda would be for the RAM, and that would be under section A, B, C, one through ten, and D, one through four. That concludes personnel.
Thank you. Can I get a motion in a second to approve the agenda?
So moved.
I'll second.
Policy, Mr. Leegman.
We refer to the board the following policies for first read, policies that are listed under section A. You can see that some of them are policies and some are policies and regulations. So that's for a first read. And just to point out to the board, if you look at the bottom two on the policy, there are two policies that are to be abolished as well. That concludes policy agenda.
Can I get a motion? Thank you. Can I get a motion in a second to approve the agenda?
I'll motion. I'll second.
Then we have finance, Ms. Case.
We're looking to take action on item number one, and items two through ten will be for the RAM.
Thank you. Can I get a motion in a second to approve the agenda?
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board on agenda items?
No.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Sorry, Diana.
No, that is. Okay. I had a quick question on the policy fifty-two hundred attendance. So number two is dating session, letter V. It says that the dating session shall consist of not less than four hours, as it is right now, except that one continuous session of two and a half hours may be considered a full day in kindergarten. I'm assuming that that's standard language because some jurisdictions have half-day kindergarten, but is there any opportunity to remove that since I don't see it's ever having half-day kindergarten? Or is it per?
No, it's not a problem if that's the regulation. The board can certainly make that change for the second reading.
So do I need to make a motion to do that?
You just need to send me the language, and I'll note it so when I reshare the second reading, I'll put that in the blue for the board to see if that was a recommendation from the board to let you change. So Ms. Powell, if you would, if I email the changes and all that.
Sure. Okay. Thanks. Thank you. Any other questions or comments on agenda items?
Yeah, under policy, thrilled that the road forward is being abolished, really. A question about emergency virtual or remote instruction. I'm assuming that's a state requirement. It said more than three days mandated by the state or county. We have a plan for remote instruction, so that's because we have to.
That's because we have to, yes.
I just wanted to comment again. I know I said the last meeting, you know, congratulating the retirees. I see Mr. Kay and Ms. Butler, who have been here so long, and Ms. Manisi and Margaret, we talked about last meeting. So it's hard when we get to this point because we're losing all of our tenured staff that has been here forever and ever, and they're like family. So good luck to them, and thank you for all your time and energy and years. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, then that's going to bring us to public comments on agenda items and additional matters. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on matters of interest to the school community. Individuals wishing to speak must state their name and municipality of residence. Comments are limited to pre-administration, but an individual may speak a second time after all others who wish to speak on the topic have been heard. All statements should be directed to the board president, and no participant may address their question with board members individually. All speakers are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of others whose legal rights may be affected. Please note, while it's not the board's intention to civil comment on matters of legitimate concern, the public should be aware that if their statements violate the rights of others under the law of defamation or invasion of privacy, they may face personal liability to the injured party. If speakers are uncertain of the legal ramifications of their comments, the board urges them to seek guidance beforehand from their own label advisor. Any public comments, questions?
Hi, my name is Abby Burke. I'm from the Madawan. I wanted to come, I have like three little things to say. I just wanted to come and bring someone's attention that while we have like problems in middle school, I wanted to just publicly say that we have a guidance counselor there named Mr. Haney, who is like one of the best assets, I think, by staff in the district. He has helped my family, he has gone over and above to help both of my kids. He is one of the most fantastic individuals, and anyone who knows me knows I've had a little bit of a headbutt with the special ed and child study teams. So I just wanted to like let you guys know that he is like fantastic and whatever you guys can do for him. And also in Lloyd Road, your child study team over the last two years has changed dramatically for the better. Ms. Saw and Ms. Giachi are like, where I used to have to fight, 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 it was a joke, like how many like requests for child study team evaluations we were going to do for my oldest, like for my daughter, they actually were like, we actually, like I couldn't find a neurologist and they got one. And they like really consistently go out of their way, the whole child study team to really like do wonderful things, which I've had many issues in the past. So I just wanted to let you guys know that whoever's hiring your child study team staff and your guidance counselor is doing a really great job. So thank you. I know you care not enough, so thank you.
It's not me, it's Mike and Del.
Well, good job because they are fantastic. Like Mr. Haney, I have never dealt with anyone, and I feel like sometimes like he's been put a little bit under the bus and like almost like, oh, let's see how Abby's going to flip today, see how he's going to be held, and he's always really kind and nice, you know, whatever you have said. And for those of you who don't know me, it's been a big roller coaster over the last two years, so I really appreciate that, so thank you. And then when you guys talk about parent involvement with like the middle school, so I've been on both sides of it, where I have one kid who was like mercilessly bullied at Lloyd Road, we had many issues. And then I have one who's at a district because he just doesn't have to behave correctly, you know, so I can't understand both sides. As a parent on both sides, I think one of the things that was missing is that when my kid gets into trouble or they're having a conflict with another child, we're not all brought together. Like I don't know who that kid is, I can't talk to their parents, and the parents not being able, I think the parents not being able to communicate with each other, now I know we can't always do that in a positive way, but not communicating with each other I think is a problem because now I got to find the kid and then find the parent and try to figure out what's going on, and it's not always maybe not done in a healthy way or they're getting half the story. And I understand the need for privacy, but I just remember when I was a kid, if I got into trouble, which wasn't often, my parents were terrifying, like we all came together, like it was like me, and that was private school, so that was like even more terrifying. So it was like me and my parents, and then like the other kid and their parents, and we all knew that everyone was going to be like in this massive trouble, and I think leaving that part out while privacy is important, I think is a huge issue.
I can just speak to that quickly. It's funny you say it, well, it's not mentioning it, we were talking about that last week is one of the things to move forward proactively with. To your point, sometimes it might not work because of animosity that pre-exists.
Hundred percent.
However, I do agree with you in that those instances when we can, that needs to be something that we do and are proactive about because I agree with you, I think it helps the overall, you know, the overall way we need to move forward.
I mean, I have a lot of kids in my house, a lot. I have the two boys, and like we drove like half the high schools either, like working through my tiny little apartment, and I got the smallest space with the most kids like at most times. And like I hear a lot of the stories they're telling us, and the one thing that is missing is that nobody's parents really know what's going on. I know what's going on, right? Like none of the other parents know what's going on, that's for sure. They bring us into a loop as safely as you can because then there's like that little like, maybe the kids are scared of us, but maybe, maybe they're not, but maybe they are. You know what I mean? It's just like, maybe that'll bring them back, like there's an actual consequence in school, but also at home, and possibly even forcing the kids to do some community service.
And that was part of, part of my discussion with the juvenile judge Vermont County and something I'm going to pick up with the prosecutor as well because in a lot of instances, they just get sent back as what are called station house adjustments where, you know, they went in front of somebody, but that was the extent of it. So I think there needs to be more follow-up with that, and I certainly will keep the board and the public posted as I go down this road with the, with the Vermont County Juvenile Judge and prosecutor, absolutely.
I mean, even at the district, like because we have parents of special people, and I'll tell you, like every Saturday, we are struggling, like my little girl does it, she's allowed to, but like they're struggling with buddies.
Yes.
It's an hour. So you know, and then in district, you know, that's an organization within district that is kids within districts, you know, it's like kind of like you want to be a jerk, great, come on, you can't be a jerk on these scales, it doesn't work, so I just a suggestion.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Lola Gonzalez, I'm from Aberdeen. So I have two issues that are off-topic of what we were talking about before, but one of the issues I feel like is I wish that like the elementary school schedules and the high school schedules and middle school schedules and where those schedules were switched because I feel like a lot of the high school students have jobs, they play a lot of sports, they have like a lot of out-school activities that take up time in their day, and a lot of them come home later, some come earlier, it just depends on the kid. But I feel like high school students are more likely to wake up later than little kids, and I feel like when you're forcing them to wake up and come to school at like seven fifteen in the morning after like, let's say like if they are on the basketball team and they like have a job to like help pay with like stuff that they want, like that's, that can be like really exhausting and tiring, and like I know a lot of kids sometimes like having like all of that like stress under like a certain amount of time to like get ready, and like you go to school, like play basketball, you're on the basketball team, you have a job. Like I know that that can be like really stressful, and that takes up a lot of time, you know, I feel like kids in the preschool or in the elementary school, they wake up early naturally, and they don't have any worries like that serious outside of school. So I just feel like even if like the, like three elementary school schedules and the high school schedules were switched, I feel like that would make a big difference. Even I'm in eighth grade, I'm in middle school, and I know that like getting up and working school at ten is kind of like a problem for me to be basketball team. And getting up that early, like sometimes I miss having like a morning schedule because even just like those like extra twenty, thirty minutes can like make a big difference.
There is a tremendous amount of talk, not just at the state level, but at the federal level. First, thank you, first standing up and speaking. And secondly, your thought process is sound. So I see that in the near future, I don't know how soon, but what you're thinking, a lot of other people are thinking as well. So I think, I think, I think with the state, I think they're just trying to work through it logistically. There are a couple of, I would say, trial districts right now in New Jersey that I've had, I think one or two might, is that the case? I'm not sure, but, but I do see that coming, and you're in eighth grade, so you may, you may very well see that. Now, the headache on the other side of the logistics and all of that, that's not for you to worry about, that would be for me essentially, but I think, I do think we're moving towards that, and you very well could see it in your, before you're done with your first part of your education in twelfth grade, so, yeah.
I also have another, you know, point out. So I am in eighth grade, and like most of the fights in middle school happen in eighth grade, and like even some of my friends have like been part of fights. And I have personally never been in any fights, I've never had lunch tension, I've never been written up, I don't have a record. But I know for a fact that they took away like our ability to use our phones in lunch, and all this stuff has been happening with phones and bullying, I completely dislike, I hate it, and I hate that this is happening, like especially when I see happening to some kids like maybe either stick up for, or some kids I know deserve to be stuck up for. But taking away our phones during lunch, like some kids, even if there is a fight during school, I know they also took away our Wi-Fi. And I mean like, a lot of the people like that wander us during lunch, like they don't take that, it's like accountability. So, sometimes like they'll have like a kid who's like not even using his phone, like their phone like on the table, and like they just like snatch it, and like, they're not even be like a kid that like doesn't even know that like you're allowed to build a fight happening without having Wi-Fi.
I understand.
And I just feel like taking away our phones at lunch, like that is like, like that's like our break, our lunch is like our break during the school day, and like after like we've been learning, or like going to work, like, just like the day. And I feel like during lunch, when we have our phones, I feel like we're less likely to fight because it's like our, like one time, I don't think we've had a single fight in the cafeteria this year, actually, like in my lunchroom. And I'm like, we're like not going to try and fight each other and like cause problems in a place that like we know we have more freedom than if we were to have a fight like during passageway in the hallways. I just feel like taking away our phones during lunch is, like I feel like there's like other ways that we could like prevent filming videos and like other ways that we could like discipline the students from getting into fights.
Have you spoken with Mr. Wells about this yet?
Um, no.
All right. You have a problem doing that?
No.
All right, I can come too, and we can talk about some of the things that you just spoke about.
Okay.
All right, not until next week, though, is that all right? So, I'll come find you later Tuesday.
Okay.
So, before you walk away, I just have to say, you are such an impressive young woman. I mean, you really are. I mean, some adults do. And it was very clear, concise, here is the recommendation, so thank you, that was brilliant.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, just, thank you.
I'll see you next week.
Thank you. Anyone else?
So, I'm going to speak for Caroline, she's a little shy. Okay. This is my daughter Caroline. She is a fifth grader in the Lloyd Road of the Newatta One. Caroline's a little bit upset about the dress code. She feels that it's not fair that the boys have literally one thing that they have to deal with, and the girls have to delay rules. She also feels that it's not fair that on the fifth grade swim pool party, that the girls have to be completely covered up with a full-piece bathing suit, and the boys get to wear swim trunks without a tee-shirt. Whether she vomited yesterday, her brain, and what she's wearing have two completely different things, and she just would hope that maybe you guys would look into something to make it like, it's hot sometimes, it's cold sometimes, you know. I know for someone like her, it's hard to find clothes that are size-wise, but like, I don't know, we guys have girls, and we love trying to find a shirt that's not cropped out. Like any of them that are not cropped out, like at all. And I'm not, I'm not one who has a problem with that, I don't care because, I don't care, but it's a rule, so we're trying to follow the rules, right? She just doesn't think it's fair.
So, I can tell you, and I know the board, one of the policies that they're taking a close look at is dress code, so.
Okay, so make it so. Thank you.
So, we can keep you posted as well.
Okay.
Anyone else from the public? If nothing, we are going to take action on agenda items. We have curriculum and instruction A and B 1 through 3, student services 1 through 7, personnel 1 and 2, policy and regulations A, which is a first read, and then finance number 1. Ms. Ritter?
Yes.
Ms. Pilis?
Yes.
Ms. Gershner?
Yes.
Mr. Montau?
Yes.
Ms. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Burrow?
Yes.
Ms. Marneke?
Yes.
Ms. Martinez?
Yes.
Ms. Scully?
Yes.
Okay, any unfinished business?
I would, I would be remiss tonight if I didn't say that the, the National Conference for Super Tenants is in San Antonio this week, and Ms. Perez will be presenting, so she'll be representing the Newatta One, and really excited about that, so congrats, Ms. Perez.
Ms. Pell?
Um, I was just asking if, is there anything formal that we need to do to form the ad hoc committee? We've talked about it a lot tonight, and I know where we were in the process.
As far as the board is concerned, I believe that the board had agreed at a previous meeting to have an ad hoc committee. And Ms. Scully, I believe you have names of board members that are interested?
Uh, yes, we do, and I believe Ms. Pell would like to chair the committee. Yes, I will.
So, as long as you don't have a quorum, continue, and I think Ms. Collins is the chairperson, then you want to report out to the board progress of the committee.
Well, there's. Mrs. Scully, if I could just, I know earlier I mentioned in the questions for, for the agenda, I know these guys were going to meet, if maybe we could, and I think you guys are on the same page with moving up the, the social media, media and the possession, vaping policies, start with those first if we can.
Yes. And the tech, the, sorry, not necessarily social media, it's the technology.
Technology, yes.
Thank you. Would agree, yes. Any new business? Then we will move to executive session. Be resolved that a closed session be convened for the purpose of discussing privacy, personnel, and attorney-client matters. Subject matters, matter of these discussions will be disclosed to the public in a recent confidentiality besides. Although the board cannot guarantee it, the length of the executive session is estimated to be 30 minutes, after which the public being of course will reconvene and proceed with business. Action will not take place. Can I get a motion and a second to enter executive session?
I'll motion.
I'll second. I'll paper.
Aye.